I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99 and AT&amp;T U-verse and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Councils will come to order the Chair calls on City Clerk Alvin Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Worthy.
Here.
Mack.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Council McKinnon is absent today. Councilwoman Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we do thank you for today. Father, we thank you for the blessings you've given us. Really, thank you for Jesus and forgiveness for our poor motive. I pray, Father, that your will is done in this meeting, that you lead us guys and direct us, just help us to do everything in accordance with your will and give you the thanks. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the two-week work sessions and council meeting that was held on August 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of August 23rd through the 29th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation. Unfinished business, we have three items for our unfinished business. We have an ordinance amending the city code regarding the mobile food vehicle. And this ordinance was presented last week for the first reading and this amends code section 130-493B to clarify that the regulation referred to city property and section 130-497 to allow operation seven days a week from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Do we have a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next unfinished business item is a rezoning property located on Valley and Reservoir Street in District 3 from an R1 one-family resident district to a B1 neighborhood business district. And this ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Saying.
One abstention, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license.
Madam President, the Finance and Legal Department have recommended that the license be denied due to an existing failure of the applicant to pay taxes due on other business entities. I'd like to make a motion to substitute a resolution denying the issuance of this license based on those factors.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to substitute the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the substitution.
Move to adopt the resolution as substituted to deny the issuance of alcoholic beverage license.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution disapproving the license, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Saying.
We have one abstention, motion carries to adopt for denial of the license.
Madam President, I'd just like to make clear the position of the council here. It is our position that failure to pay sales tax on an existing business should prohibit one from receiving a license to open a new business up to and until those sales taxes are paid in arrears. At the point where these taxes are brought current, certainly it would be another opportunity submit for the alcoholic beverage license.
Our next item, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 218 North, 218 Ninth Street South, also identified as 902 Elmwood Street in District 4, Mark Anderson, Fambro, and Citizen Bank and Trust being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case involves a burned house. We filed the process in April of this year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 232 East Waldner Street in District 4, Sunnet B. Chow, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a mobile home. We filed our case in January of this year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Mr. Harbison, is that building currently occupied?
I'm sorry?
Is the building currently occupied, the mobile home?
It does, but it calls for the maintenance, the ongoing maintenance. It's difficult for a mobile home of this age, once it becomes vacant, has not been maintained, it's difficult to keep in line as far as our codes are required.
But it is vacant right now.
It is, yes.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 205 Hurstburg Avenue in District 4, Sunnet B. Chow, being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case also involves a mobile home that's actually on the same parcel as the previous case. We filed it in January. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 42 Bryan Street in District 6, Charlotte Gossett being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed our case on this, on this House in January. There have been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out January the 18th, no work done on that. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
Brian, is there something more to this House than what we see in the photo? It looks like it's redeemed.
We're going to crunch the numbers and see if it would qualify as a rehab.
Photos can be deceiving, really, sometimes.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance of the rear commercial building located at 416 North 24th Street. And this is in District 6, Beltline, Canterbury, LTD, and Southern State Banks being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves an accessory building that appears to be some type of old pump house on the east rear side of the property formerly known as Canterbury Station. We started our case in July 2018. It took us over a year just to nail down the property owner. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve and we're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
Is that little building solid rock? Make sure, you know, I couldn't tell from the painted cement.
There is an old rock visible, but it's actually built on old concrete.
It looks like, just like a water department pump.
Yes, it does.
When it knocked Little Road? Okay.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Wingit LLC doing business as Buffalo Wings located at 991 East Chestnut Street in District 4 has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Next item and last item is a resolution authorizing agreement with Northeast Alabama Bicycle Association and the Edward W. Express Composite Mountain Bike Team. And this is for city sponsorship of a mountain bike training day to be held at the Black Creek Trail on September the 17th, 2019, and the amount is $2,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? My only discussion of this is that this is something that I would love to see a lot of our youth get involved in, mountain bike riding. Everybody doesn't play football, everybody doesn't play soccer, but this is a sport that they could get involved in. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business? Department reports, committee, board. We have a citizen request, Joseph Cole. I should say, you know the drill. Your name?
My name is Joseph Cole, Atlanta, Georgia, by way of Gaston, Alabama. This morning, I'm here to talk on a matter that some people don't like to talk on, especially blacks, with drugs in the black community. The past couple of weeks, I've had several mothers to call me, I mean crying, about the situation with their sons. Some in jail, some in prison, and some are just dealing with drugs. And this is really a serious problem. And I really don't have any answers and I really don't know what to tell them. And it really bothers me when you hear these complaints and you can't do anything about them. We also have a problem with the selling of drugs in the black community. Believe it or not, I've had people who have called me and asked me to call the police because drugs are being sold in the area, the streets are blocked, and they're just really fearful. So they called me and I called. I don't mind putting a target on my back. But it's just come to a situation that I wanted to bring before this council. Because what it does, it really hurts young black males. Because once you get this arrested for drugs or get a felony, then you don't have any chance of getting a job. We have a number of people apply for the Police Department. If you've been doing drugs and all, you can't get a job at a number of places. And we're trying to see what is it that can be done. And people have a right to be at their homes and not worry about the roads being blocked, people blocking their driveways and all. And I know that the police is doing all that they can do. And I know in some areas which are considered drug areas or high crime areas, certain black males profile because they're young and black and people just automatically think they do drugs. But hopefully it's something, you know, that can be done about this issue. But I do know it starts in the home. A gentleman was telling me that he saw this 14-year-old pull up his shirt, had a Glock. There is no way that a 14 or 15-year-old going to be in my house and I don't know he has a weapon and I don't know that he has drugs. But this is a very troubling issue and it's one that we have to try to deal with. I know the former president of this council had a meeting about a couple of years ago and it was different groups here, law enforcement, dealing with drugs and opioids. I don't know what came from that meeting. I don't know if there's a task force involved. I do not know if there's a number that people can call to get help. Even in the police, I don't know if the police have a hotline number for drugs where people can call. Because it's really, really serious. And I do not mind speaking up because it hurts us more ways than one. And I don't know how we can get our arms around it because this is just not to Gaston, the black community in Gaston. There's drugs just about everywhere, but what can we do? And I just wanted to bring this before the council because to hear these women crying about their sons and the condition they have. But one thing that's troubling to me, if a young black kid, 18, he get caught with drugs, he automatically gets a felony. And that should not be the point of the case when it's his first offense. There is a certain thing as pre-trial diversion. They get a second chance to get their act together. But a number of blacks don't know this, so when they get caught, I don't know what's going on with their attorneys, I won't go there. But then they get a felony and once that felony is there, then they're on this color code, they have to call in, that's the money they paying now. It's just really a dire situation. So I'm not telling you this for saying that what you can do, because I don't know what anyone can do, but I did want to bring it to your attention. And I think it's something that, you know, we really need to shine the light on, we need to get in our communities. Because thoughts and prayers, it's not going to do anything about this. We can think and pray to hell freeze over, but something needs to be done about this. I don't have the answer. But I did want to present this because it is serious and it's affecting a whole lot of people. Young people, their parents and all. And to hear these women cry just touched my heart. And it hurts me worse because, you know, I advocate for a number of things, you all know this, but it's nothing I can tell them, you know? And how can you help individuals if they do not want help? People have to want help for you to be able to help them. But I thank you for allowing me this time to bring this on. All we can do, we do have to pray, but we got to do a little bit more in praise. So just whatever, if you know of any numbers or anything, you can tell me that people can call in the groups. I would gladly get that information. Thank you very much.
Councilman, we have remarks, but I would just like to say, all of us have district meetings and we address, we address that problem. We do have a pre-trial diversion, division. We have a drug task force. But it also takes the citizens of this area, as you say, to, some people are afraid, some people have basically said they're not going to tell because they don't, they're afraid to tell. But as you said, it starts, it starts at home and it's not, it doesn't start when they 10 or 11. You got to start when these children are babies. So my, but I know that drugs is everywhere in every community, not just the black community. Drugs is in every community. We have seven districts and I'm quite sure the police go in all seven districts and pick up someone. So it's a problem that it's going to take everybody to work together. And I think if it was a solvable problem, then it would probably trickle on down to us. Councilman Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Those comments are definitely true. One thing I'll point out also is that we likewise provide some level of funding for the task force efforts. And of course, we've also taken steps and partnered with a number of cities in a lawsuit, class action lawsuit against the wholesalers. So, you know, we're not sitting on our hands and ignoring the issue of drugs. We're taking steps and we're trying to do things that we think are meaningful. But unfortunately, with a problem like this, there's still more work to be done. And one of the things that is very difficult to battle against legislatively is overcoming the tendency of people to buy into what is very clearly illegal. You know, that's, that's something that is very difficult to overcome legislatively. So again, it just really goes back to the homes to a large degree. And I think law enforcement and elected officials alike will continue to do what they can to make it more difficult and uncomfortable for those people to function. So I'm going to shift to a separate, to a separate topic. There have been a number of comments about the Goodyear plant. And I think, you know, some things that need to be clearly stated is, you know, for one, from a City of Gaston perspective, Goodyear is a very, very important corporate citizen for the City of Gaston. And our goal and objective and effort is for Goodyear to continue to be a corporate citizen within our city. And so I think it, I think it should be very clearly stated and noted that this, this plant in Gaston is under protected status through 2022. You know, I don't think that there's anything that's been said from Goodyear or any other closely related party that is going to, going to make that null and void. That, that still continues to be a part of the current collective bargaining agreement. There have been and continue to be efforts underway involving every level of government designed to partner with Goodyear in securing the future of the Gaston plant. As you know, because Goodyear is a private company, many of those efforts and discussions aren't necessarily available for public consumption. But you have to know that with all of the talk and all of the conversation regarding that plant and the significant economic impact that that plant has for this area, you have to know that there, there is activity and there is conversation relative to securing that plant for our area. As a community, we cannot afford the luxury of making negative public comments about the CEO or the company as we attempt to partner with them in securing the plant. There have been editorials, making negative comments about Goodyear's CEO. There have been loose-lipped comments about Mexican operations and Mexico plants that aren't helpful. And these types of comments have to be kept to a minimum. We don't have the luxury of asking a corporate partner to stay in our community and continue to invest, but at the same time blasting them publicly. That's just not a luxury we can afford. As a city that is proud of what Goodyear has offered this city over the years, we stand ready to partner with all relevant agencies and corporate citizens in development of a plan to secure this partnership, both currently and into the future. And so again, we would ask that the community continue to do that, continue to do what we can to support both the workers in the Goodyear plant and to support the entity that is Goodyear to ensure that we continue to maintain that very valuable corporate partner for, for, for the future. We can't portray this notion that the sky is falling and that tomorrow is going to be doomsday if we want people to continue to invest in our community. We have to be very positive, we have to be much more positive going forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilwoman Worthy?
Yes, Madam President. I want to thank Mr. Cole for coming and giving us his thoughts. But the number for the drug task force is 256-549-5465. For the tip line is 256-546-3131. And we get those calls also. And, but the problem that we have is someone can call and say someone's selling drugs, but we have to have evidence of that. And you can't just bust in somebody's house on somebody else's word. So it has to be an investigation and that investigation takes a long time sometimes in order for us to secure a warrant and go in and do what they need to do. But, and you also, you talked about the form that we had. And we had one here and what came of that is you can call 211 now, which 211 was already in effect, but they have information where the people that's on drugs, when they want to come off, can go. Because we ran into several problems where, once a person is on drugs and they decide that they want to come off, you have to get them out of that environment right then and get them into treatment. But, you know, we, we're going to have to continue to pray. But we can talk all we want, but until a person decides they want to come off drugs and hit rock bottom, there's nothing we're going to be able to do. But we are treating it as a medical problem now instead of a crime problem like when we had to crack up in them. You know, that was a crime problem. But now with opioids, it's not a crime problem, it's a medical problem. So, and we have all kinds of diversionary problems. So, and like when Attorney General was here from the state of Alabama, he said, they're not putting people in jail now, in prison for marijuana. But we'll see if that's the case. But we'll see if that's the case for the different communities. But I also want to move on and agree with what Councilman Williams just said about Goodyear. That was very informative, and thank you for that. And also, I want to say thank you to the Career Center, to Ms. Katrina Herring, the general manager back there. Thank you and your staff for all of the work you do for the citizens of Gaston and Etowah County, especially for the job fairs. We've had the job fair last Tuesday, that's while I wasn't here, we had 90 employers there with over 2,000 job openings, and we had over 500 job seekers that come through the doors. So there's jobs out there, and like I said before, it may not be the job you want. But this is the fifth year we've had the job fair. And when you come in and you meet those employers, you find out the qualifications and what you need to get in order to obtain that job. So within five years now, you should have been able to go out and get a degree, you need to get a certification, or whatever it is to get that job. So, and we continue to have them. So I just want to say thank you to Ms. Herring and her staff, and thanks to the city for supporting it. Thank you.
Councilman Beck?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Want to also echo Councilman Williams' comments, very well thought out and very well said. I mean, it's the elephant in the room, and for everybody that thinks there's not a lot of work going on, there's a lot of activity behind the scenes. It's just, if you think about it, it's just not proper to be discussed out in public forum. So don't think the city and the Industrial Development Authority and others aren't working in conjunction with all other entities from the state and everywhere else. There is a lot of activity going on on behalf of Gaston and Etowah County to maintain existing businesses and to attract new businesses. And I couldn't agree more with Councilman Williams. The last thing we need is negative comments on social media or anywhere else where a potential new business or even a current business will read that and will walk away with a less than negative attitude toward Gaston. So please, if you have those comments, keep them to yourself or share them with somebody at lunch or something like that, but don't plaster them all over everywhere. People read that. You know, words matter. Words matter. What we say to one another matters, what we say to our children matter, what we say out on a public forum matters. Words have a lot of meaning, so be careful with your words and careful how you choose what you say and when you say it and where you say it. Because you don't know if it's gonna be a real negative thing that could really hurt the future of our, of our city and county. Also want to thank Councilman Worthy for his fifth annual job fair. You know, there's, there's jobs out there, and I agree, it may not be the job that you want, but you're more attractive to an employer if you have a job than if you don't have a job. And so thank you for all you do, and then the folks that help you do that, it's just a, it's a real collaborative effort, and there's a lot of people that are involved, and it really shows there's a lot of opportunity. And thanks to all the companies and businesses that come and set up a table and, and try to recruit new employees. Also want to point out, you know, school's back in session. As we've talked about, there's a lot of people, there's more people on the road. Please obey the speed limits. Please watch your speed and watch where you're going and, and how you drive. I said last week, and I'll, I'll say it again, leave about five minutes early. You know, I get into a habit of setting my clock five minutes fast, that way, because I'm, I'm usually behind, so that gives me a cushion. So it tricks yourself into having a little more time. So watch out for one another and be courteous out there. It's, you know, we've got a lot of cars, there's a lot of kids walking around, and it's a, it's just a busy time of, of the year. And Mr. Cole, thank you for coming and thank you for your concern and for your care. I think we would all echo in agreement that it's drugs and things is such a huge problem. And I'm like you, I don't, I don't, I don't have the answer. But, but I think there's a lot of folks that are working on that, and there's a collaborative effort from city council to the police department, to the, our judges that have the diversionary programs all the way to the state level. It's, it's, it's an overwhelming problem. And so I'll continue to pray along with Councilman Worthy that maybe the, that we'll have a resolution and an answer one of these days. But thank you for coming again.
That's all.
Councilman Wilson?
As, as someone who was about an inch away from being a third-generation Goodyear tire builder before I started my own business, this is obviously something that's very important to me. The only thing I'll say is quite simply, if there's something that this city councillor this city can do to prevent any job loss at Goodyear, it'll be done, period. Having said that, Mr. Cole, Councilman Worthy made a great point about 211. It's a tremendous resource. It's an easy number to remember. It's something that's completely anonymous. Those mothers that you talk about who are dealing with those tough situations can pick up the phone and call 211 and get support resources. They can find charitable organizations that are willing to help them out. More importantly, they can get information, they can know what to look for, understand what, what drugs have different impacts on, on different individuals and how to address those things and how to approach those situations and those conversations, trying to encourage those people to get help. And then on the police front, I couldn't agree with you more in the sense that we've got to continue to arrest drug dealers and treat drug addiction. Those are two very different things. People who, who operate in the trade of drugs belong in jail, people who are addicted to drugs belong in a treatment facility. So that's something that I think is really important. And the last point I'll make is, obviously, I think we all know that poverty plays a tremendous role in drug abuse. Now with the, as somebody who's, who's dealt with drug addiction in my immediate family, we know that no one's impervious to, to drug addiction, but it certainly resonates louder in the, in the poor communities out there. So that's the reason I'll give Councilman Worthy all the credit in the world for the efforts he makes towards the Career Fair and the Job Fair, because that's where it starts. Somebody who has a job and responsibility is much less likely to fall into the hands of addiction. So I think that's a great starting point. The more we can get these young individuals in, in a work environment, the sooner we can get them in a work environment where they learn those responsibilities and those soft skills, we can keep them out of, of those addictive environments. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Reed, you got five minutes.
You know me better than that. You know, I've been, I've been involved with the public most of my life, and I can truthfully say on observation, and I'm gonna agree with you, it starts with the family, period. The day they're born, two, three, four years old, that's when they start to do it. You can't go off and leave them with somebody else and go do something and, and come back and expect them to be the President of the United States in 21 years. So I put the big responsibility on the family, period. The next one I blame, not blame, the next one I would say is church. We've had numerous pastors come up here and tried and tried and tried and tried. And Joe, yeah, pray, yeah. But I guarantee you one thing, you better keep on praying, because the crisis is here. And the last one I got, and I watched, it's mentors. I don't care if it's the guy at, at the corner apartment, cutting grass, that'll talk to the child and kind of mentor a little bit till somebody more educated gets along with them. But honestly, y'all, it goes all the way back to the family. Get them in church. Know where your daughter is when she's 17 years old. Follow that boy down the street like the one that grabbed him out and sent him back home. Jerking on his butt right quick when he's four, five years old. Anyway, that's all I got. Thank you.
As an educator, education is the key.
Yeah.
Education is the key. One of the things we need to be concerned about, one of our delegation is here, but the legislature just, legislature just passed the Alabama Literacy Act. And what that act does is, you have a child, by 2022, they should be reading. And if they're not reading by third grade and they take this test, they will not be able to go on to the next grade. If your child come home with all A's and they still don't pass that benchmark test, they don't go to the fourth grade. Those are the things that we need to be concerned about, because that will also help every area, health as well as crime. Education is the key. You can't get around it, and it begins, it starts at home. I'd like to announce that I will have a district meeting September the 23rd at the Antioch Family Life Center. Is there anything else to cut?
One more thing, Madam President. I don't know how I forgot this. I was with the second graders this morning out of Gaston City with Liberty Learning Foundation, and they were talking about Lady Liberty and the Statue of Liberty, and it was very educational for all our second graders. So I just want to give a shout out to our second graders.
If there's nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.